Thank you for joining us this evening for the January 16, 2024 Montessorino Regular City Council Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few possible just as the council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with this regular city council meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and be able to speak to the council. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide the back or public comment. Lastly, when we are not all in the same room, all votes in the meeting must be taken by roll call. And then today, council member Turner, can you state your reason for participating remotely?
Yes, so pursuant to government code 545, I'm sorry, 54954.2 for remote attendance. Under the just cost provision, I would like to inform the council that I need to attend tonight's meeting remotely due to a virus that I have coughing, sneezing, headaches that the doctor says is contagious. I have no one else in the room other than myself.
All right, and I will call the meeting of the Montessorino City Council of January 16, 2024 to order at 7:03 PM.
Council member Turner?
Yes.
Council member Craig?
Here.
Sorry, Vice Mayor Craig. Council member Alahi?
Present.
Council member Mekachak?
Present.
And Mayor Wolshammer?
Present.
Thank you.
And I think we should do the pledge of allegiance with a little bit of orders, but the mayor can change the order. Since there are nobody in the room to call upon, I think we could all do it together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands where the nation under God is invincible with the liberty of its own.
All right. Are there any orders of the day?
Any changes to the orders of the day?
Anybody want to change the order of business today?
No.
No. That casual speaker agenda. I believe there are no presentations. Anybody wish to make an announcement?
I just wanted to follow up on that youth, take with Martin Luther King celebration today. It was very well attended, about 100, 100 young people in the city there. Considered Martin Luther King and also some elected showed up, Sidney Chavez was there and Vero Zanacara was there and the council members sent those also there. So it was a good event.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements? We will move on to oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on topics that are not on the agenda. There's nobody in the room here. Is there anybody online who wishes to address the council on something that is not on the agenda?
There are no hands raised.
Nobody? Written communications?
Nothing was received.
Nothing received. Very fast. The next on the agenda is consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Eight items on the consent calendar. If I'm not going to read them all, you can all see them. Does anybody wish to pull an item from the agenda before we take it off? Ask the senator. So anybody? Anybody in the public who wants to comment on the consent calendar? Anybody online?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised, okay. That is, was nobody wanting to pull items? Is there a motion to introduce the doctor consent calendar?
Call second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not everybody is in the room, we just will take a roll call.
Roll call, okay.
Yes. So council member Mekachak?
Aye.
Council member Alahi?
Aye.
Council member Turner? Oh, you're on mute.
I on 2 to 8, and I will abstain on 1 since I wasn't there.
I'm sorry, can you repeat? So you wish to pull?
No, I said I will vote yes on item 2 to 8. And I will abstain from item 1 since I wasn't at the meeting.
Got it.
Is that procedurally okay to do it like that, or should we?
Thank you. Vice Mayor Craig?
Yes.
And Mayor Wolshammer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
So do I need to repeat the vote?
Of 5-0.
5-0 with 1 abstain. The next item on the agenda is public hearings.
We don't have any public hearings, so it's nothing.
We're going through this agenda very quickly. Unfinished business is next on the agenda. Consider establishment of an appointment to the city of Montessorino Council Financial Systems and Technology Program at all Canadians. I believe there was a staff report on this.
Thank you, Mayor Wolshammer. Good evening, Mayor. Council before you this evening is the consideration of establishment of two ad hoc committees carryover from our last council meeting. When we chose ad hoc committees and commission appointments, it was not clear at the time exactly, as was mentioned by our city attorney, this how the scope and depth of those committees, so some information was brought to staff, staff reviewed it, and created resolutions. So those two ad hoc committees can be chartered if council desired, as well as there would be a vote for nominees for those two committees. Two members of council for each. That is my brief report. I can answer any questions should council have any.
Council members, are there any questions about this? Or let's see manager?
Yeah, just to be clear, so you've got a committee for financial systems, a separate one for technology program?
Yes, there are two additional ad hoc committees with two council members on each committee. And in the resolutions, you can see about the fourth, whereas kind of the scope of the committees spelled out.
I don't have a question. I was just gonna provide a comment. If you want to, if I may make a comment now, or do you want to have the questions only?
Let's do clarification questions now and then follow up later. Anybody have any questions or clarification for the city manager? In that case, let's open it up for public comment. Is there anybody online who wishes to address the council on this topic?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. Councilor Turner, did you have any questions on the subject? No. And please, we'll bring it back to council, council member Mekachak, to make your comment.
Yes, so we've got a finance committee and an ad hoc information technology committee. And we were advised that we have to change the name of them and the substance of what they do because they can only last for a year. So that's was the genesis, if you will, of why their, why the names are changed. And, and the everything in the charter should be, in the charters should be doable or completed in 12 months. I think that was the other requirement.
That's right. And they need to be limited purpose and a limited duration. So the resolution spells out specific projects or duties throughout the year and the termination date, which would be one year, 364 days from now.
I have a comment. Actually, it looks like the finance committee is just moving over and has a different thing, but the goals are pretty much the same.
No.
No?
They shouldn't be. They should be different. So the idea for these would be that the city manager and the finance director would come forward with the work that they've been doing, for example, on the biannual budget or the financial accounting systems, they would bring forward whatever proposals they've received, review those with the ad hoc committee, and then they would bring forward the recommendation to the city.
So the goals are different for this committee. My other comment was on the other committee, RT.
Technology program.
RT, the technology ad hoc committee, technology program ad hoc committee. It seems like some of the items that should be, from my point of view, should be in the community center are now mixed in with this committee. Specifically, review proposal plans for camera screen and security networks and our information technology in community center. So it looks like we're mixing up responsibilities into different committees. There's a significant overlap between the two, I think. And I wonder if we should remove that second item and clarify that that's a responsibility to public community center committee.
I believe that council member Craig has significant expertise and knowledge through his involvement with KCAP. And I think that because he's not on the community center committee, he can't participate in that per se, so in that committee. And I think it, we would be remiss not to have council member Craig's input and knowledge on that.
I understand.
That's, that's the logic.
Yeah, 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 if I may. Yeah, I think that's a good comment, and we're looking at broad, broad scope is not just cameras on the community center, but everywhere else in the city. Also, the hacking issue that comes up to make sure the staff and everybody else is on board and all this, what about what's going on and the pitching expedition that takes place. I mean, that would be the scope of the commission, the technology committee to look at all that kind of stuff, too. So the community center would be just one aspect of it, but it would not be the key. The policy to come back to the community center committee and look at it, too. So.
Why I caught my eye because it's specifically sales committee.
Yeah, so the ocean that we want supply, yeah, that's a good point.
All right. And other comments?
It's a move to set those two meetings, I guess.
So yeah, we need to, we need two separate resolutions.
Two separate resolutions, and then you also need to appoint council members to the committee. Just a question on the technology, though. Do you want to modify the language to include citywide or under the second bullet, review proposal plans for camera screens, security? Right now, it's just for the community center. Did you want to expand on that?
Yeah, I think we should expand that into citywide.
Yeah, or you could just take out the community center and just say any, any camera and security options that the city may be looking into or something like that.
City, city center.
City facilities. Or?
Yeah. That way we don't have to list everything.
So those are the only, that's the only change then? So to read the resolution or first resolution is establish financial systems at all committees.
So you need appointees to the committee first, and then you can pass the resolution that would cover all of it.
The point you know, I would need customer Mekachak, okay, this will come in. I'm sure you, the manager is, no.
So we're doing a
Appointment. So the way that the resolution will do both?
The resolution will have the names.
You just have to clarify who you want those to be, and then you can pass the resolution.
Okay. Our end nominations.
We have the finance committee and I, I remember the two of you wants to be on it. Our councilor Turner, she wants to be on it. We need one movers.
Sure, I will remain on that, on the newly instituted finance committee.
So I will appoint the council member Mekachak and Mayor Wolshammer to being on the finance committee. And the future setup finance center committee.
We need a roll call, vote for this.
Be the second. I'll, I'll second. The motion.
Right, yeah.
Council member Mekachak?
Aye.
Council member Alahi?
Aye.
Council member Turner?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Wolshammer?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
The next resolution is establishing a technology program ad hoc committee.
And so I moved up the setup of technology committee. I'd like to be on it also. I don't know if the council member Craig wants to be on it, or vice mayor Craig wants to be on it. I would like to be on that. I'll make a motion on it myself.
We need public comment on this?
Yeah, it could be.
Yeah, we did it as a whole, because they want to say so, vote with us, so we were just gonna do it, so yeah. So yes.
No additions for?
Council member Alahi and Vice Mayor Craig. Let me go ahead and take roll call, council member.
Is there a second yet?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, council member Mekachak?
Aye.
Council member Alahi?
Aye.
Council member Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Craig?
Yes.
And Mayor Wolshammer?
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
All right. That wraps up item number nine on the agenda. We have two items under new business. The first one is review and discuss revisions to the city of Montessorino regulations and guidelines for the conduct of public meetings. There is a staff report on this one also. I will.
Well, I can state it. So on December 13th, council member Mekachak tried to staff to propose edits to the regulations and guidelines for the conduct of public meetings. So we attached the red lines that he provided us with. So we'd like for you guys to review and discuss any provisions to the city may have on the city of Montessorino regulations and guidelines for the conduct of public meetings.
Then depending on how it is, we'll bring it forward, any changes that are approved, we will bring forward the next council meeting.
I see. Council members, any questions about this?
It sounds like the main changes were just changing the, is this, may I put angles change vice mayor?
That we did as part of the consent calendar, so.
That's all right. Have some comments or any questions?
Any further questions on this?
Council member Turner.
Councilor Turner, sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Can I, can I make a comment about item 10 at this point?
Well, let's, let's keep it to questions for now and comments or suggestions. Let keep those, keep those for after the public comment.
Could you say that again, please?
Questions only at this point, please. Comments, but they'll have for the public comment. So if you want to ask a question, go ahead.
No questions. I just want to make a comment. Make comments.
Let's keep it at four later.
I actually do have a question.
Okay.
So is there anything that covers unruly public speakers? I didn't really see anything that was called out. Like in some other jurisdictions now, they, they really call out the ability to remove them from the meeting if they're becoming hostile or threatening in some way or another.
I don't know if it's in here. We do have the ability to do that under certain circumstances. It's
I mean, I understand that there's now state law that lets you do that, but I mean, I wasn't sure if we had to incorporate that or.
We don't have to. We could, but let me just look here, see if there's any reference to it.
I put a six on.
Yeah, council meeting decorum.
Yeah. Is it nothing else?
Yeah, so it's, when necessary to enforce decorum, the mayor, so to council appeal, or the council itself may order a person removed from the public meeting, or the public meeting may be closed pursuant to state law.
Yes, and I guess we should add something in there for people who are attending the meeting remotely, too.
So that one's a little bit trickier. You can remove people who are interrupting meetings, which you can get in a physical situation, but on Zoom, you just cut them off. So they're not really, it's a, it's a different standard if they're attending virtually than if they're in person. So we do have some internal protocols that we've been working with in the event we need them, that deal with virtual comments. But it would be different than how we would handle it if someone was here in council chambers screaming or doing everything like that.
I also understand that some jurisdictions are now just not allowing any public comments, that you have to submit them via writing. I just wanted to throw that out and see if there were any thoughts on adding something like that to our, to our rules of.
That's a great question, yeah.
If I may, I mean, that's something we can consider, but so far it hasn't really happened, so we really want to encourage and appreciate. But, but I think we should probably put something in here that covers remote Zoom entry also. In the same way that you've covered the council meeting decorum. I think they're being remotely also, they should be subject to some standards and be cut off at the, especially on the mayor.
It's like we're moving into comments and suggestions now instead of questions.
Are there any? I, we're not answering, okay. May I respond to that question? Because there is, since I did these edits, I'm pretty familiar with the document. So if you look on page, I think it's page five, and item three, manner of addressing councils, the one thing that is added, any member of the public shall request the chair's permission to approach the dais, and they only do so after being granted such permission. And what I experienced in one of the council meeting meetings was there was someone from the public that approached everyone and wanted to give them things, and I had thought that you have to have permission to approach the dais. That's, that's why that item was added in there. And I think that's from a public, from a safety perspective. I know that there were some staff that were felt uncomfortable when that individual did that. And I was chairing a meeting, and I didn't say, hey, wait, you know, it was my, that was my error, so. And then just one last question, or I'll try to do Jeopardy format as a question. Do we want to put any language in here that would allow the mayor to call a recess in the event of an unruly participant? I know that that's also done in certain jurisdictions where if, if there's a lot of, especially if the crowd gets into it, the mayor says we are in recess, the council gets up, they leave the room, and when things settle down, or if necessary, they'll go clear the meeting out, and then they'll say that this meeting will only continue on Zoom in 40 or 45 minutes to give everybody a chance to go home and log into the meeting.
But that is in there under that same section six on page nine. It gives the council, when, when necessary to enforce decorum, they can order someone removed, or the public meeting may be closed pursuant to state law. We could adjourn, we could say adjourn, to be a little more specific. We felt that would be helpful, but I think it's covered, and it is also allowed under state law as well.
Okay.
To, on your item, in item number six, meaning the decorum, it also says disruptive conduct is prohibited and may be grounds for removal from the meeting. And that, I think that goes for both people who attend hearings, but also people online, there, no distinction there here. The active behavior can be, can be addressed.
Right, and, and the only issue, the issue we need to be aware of and concerned about is First Amendment rights, which apply both in person and remotely, but they're a little heightened when they appear remotely because their ability to actually disrupt is limited, because all we have to do is cut them off. So we have greater control over that situation than we do in person.
Councilor Turner, you had your hand up, this is for a question or a comment?
This is for a question, and I guess Kirsten addressed some of it. My question really comes down to, at what point are we preventing our residents from exercising their First Amendment right? What are the guidance around that?
So the guidance is the First Amendment and the case law that comes from that. The requirement is that you notify the person that they are either being disruptive or they are not addressing a topic that is on the agenda or is consistent. It would depend on the content. But if they are disrupting or threatening or other, other type of behavior like that, they can be removed, and that would not be a First Amendment violation. But that, that determination, it really is a case by case basis, that if the situation arose, I would have to make that determination based on the facts.
Okay, so if that happens on the council, then we will depend on you to either say yes, you know, it's, it's a valid, it's valid to say they can't speak anymore, or that we are violating their First Amendment rights. So we will depend on you to say that, to tell us that, right?
Right, correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And, and one last thing, since we're going over this very thoroughly, I just want to make sure we don't have to do this again. But some other jurisdictions do tend to limit the ability to bring signs. So for example, sign can only be of a certain dimension, and they can't be on sticks. I think they could be used in an inappropriate manner in a council meeting. Do we want to take a look at something like that? Unfortunately, we have a lot of politics that can get very spirited these days.
All right, that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. We've never had that issue.
No, no, I didn't like, I don't anticipate it ever happening. I'm just saying, I've seen this in other jurisdictions where they do limit, and and I do see, see people come in with signs, and they're, you know, you think we're at a, at a football game or, or something like that.
Maybe we can add some language, a few sentences addressing that particular issue.
So we can regulate time, place, and manner, so it could be the size. And the question would be, what size would be appropriate? Do you want to be that specific? I think.
And I'll say, I don't have any ideas. I'm just posing the question to the council.
I can I can look at other jurisdictions, see what language they've used, and then we can decide if it's something we think is necessary. The other thing to do is, it's not that difficult to make changes to this. It's a resolution. It's one meeting. So we could see if it becomes an issue, and then we could always bring it back the next week if we need to. But I can get some examples.
I guess we're almost on comments now. So you know, I'm moved because
Okay. Let's move on to public comment on this topic. Since there's still nobody in the room, I want to ask if there's anybody online who wants to comment on this particular topic.
And no hands are raised.
No hands are raised, and we'll bring it back to council for comments, suggestions. I think Councilmember Turner was the very first one. You had your hand up a long time ago. Go ahead with your comment, please.
Yes, tell me if you can understand me, because sometimes I have difficulty understanding you guys. I wanted to make a comment about the proposed changes to our procedures. There are two areas where significant changes, I think, are proposed, in my opinion. And this could be seriously, I think, problematic. My main concern, one of my primary concern is with section A, meetings, item seven, agenda. Currently, our procedure calls for the agenda to be published by 5:00 PM on a Wednesday prior to the meeting, which is typically the following Tuesday. This is the proposal, the current proposal that we're looking at says that we have to publish the agenda seventy-two hours before the meeting, which would typically be 7:00 PM on a Saturday night. Okay? When I first joined the council seven years ago, the agenda was published on a Friday afternoon by 5:00 PM. This proved to be wholly inadequate at that time. The council members had to spend their weekends preparing for the meetings. This seemed to assume that we were merely editing the document for blatant errors and changes. There was not enough time to contact residents and other interested parties for input. There was not enough time to do the research or even find earlier documents that could have an impact on the case at hand. There may not be, in this case, time to contact government agencies or services that are relevant to this matter. And there was not enough time at that time to even think about what things need to be thought through in greater detail. So those are my concern. The second concern I have about this is at that time, residents complained that they did not have enough time to study the agenda and prepare for issues that concerned them directly. Okay? The council at that time then took this issue up, and after much discussion we had, we settled on the procedures we have today, and that's how that came to be. I will grant that nothing is perfect, right? But these procedures, I think, have worked well. I don't think we should change them without a good reason. And so that's my comment about that. I also have a comment about special meetings, and I will hold that if you want me to and bring it up later on.
Maybe we should stick with this topic first, because I think there will be other comments on that, and maybe you can bring back the special comments, special meeting comment later.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Thank you. What I propose we do is just walk through this, because I can explain, since I made all the comments. I think we can go through it fairly quickly. But what I was trying to do was just tighten it up. And I can point out where the substantive changes were made, but, for example, it said on item seven to reach the recipient not later than seventy-two hours. So you can always do things beforehand, but you're not bound by doing it beforehand. But, you know, if that, if the council is the if the council wishes not to change item seven from the dates, the Wednesday preceding each regular council meeting, then I'm good with that. I just thought that, for example, there's quite a few things here. So we we say council member, two words. Sometimes it's capitalized, sometimes it's not. This, most of this is just, is cleaning up, you know, grammatical errors and that sort of thing, and making it consistent. So on item seven, there's a change there. Then if you go over like on item eight, you see I struck the word city council, because if we just use council, let's do it consistently. Order of business, each regular meeting, so it was defined as a council meeting. And then cleaning up some of the language like item E on that page nine, you know, the council's defined and just adding an announcement. So these are, these are all just kind of nits. The remote participation of a council meeting, I'm not sure we've been following that, but whatever. And then on the on the letters, you'll see on page four, rather than having B at the top and then trying to, and then the subheading, I just moved the B to in front of the thing, just to make it a little better.
Okay.
You know, that's the nature of the changes, but I did add that sentence on item three, manner of addressing council. And then on on C one, one thing that I've been learning in being on council and attending other events is it's expected for the mayor to attend ceremonial events. And I think that that, you know, we just need to consider that. So, for example, there's, the sheriff has something for ball and staff, and it's something that, you know, that they want the elected officials to be at. I just, so that's why provided, I included the words provided, that the council member has the time to fulfill the duties of mayor, including ceremonial events, attending ceremonial events.
All right.
So, I mean, oh, and then the other one that's significant is significant. Item six on page seven at the bottom, we have these JPAs now. So I just thought, let's let's have the word, let's update it for kind of twenty twenty-three. And then so that was just kind of truing it up. But really, there's, there's not, there's not many substantive changes in here. It's just, it's just cleanup.
All right. Thank you for your comments, and thank you for going through this and cleaning it up. Which, do you have anything you want to?
Yeah, I wanted to appreciate, well, Mayor, I can check this going through this. And I do have something that I would address, and I agree with Councilmember Turner on the notice provision, and that's always been important to me. Not to cut that short. I know it puts a little bit extra pressure on the staff, because we have two meetings every month, and they have to get their years out as soon as possible. But I'd like to not change that, leave it at the Wednesday deadline. And the special council meeting is at twenty-four hour notice. Is that always been like that?
That's state law.
Yeah, state law, okay. So we can leave the special council meeting at twenty-four hour, but I would, I would suggest that we leave the notice for the city council meeting at the Wednesday deadline. Because that allows, you know, questions also to look at. So that was one thing I wanted to look at. Oh, I also wanted to look at section two. That's section two, is that? The meetings can be called by majority, by the mayor or by a majority of the council members. So my feeling is when you're, if you're going to be, if you are going to require to have a majority of the council member meetings, you have a potential Brown Act issue, because, you know, you talk to two other people, say, hey, let's call a meeting, and someone's going to say, why? And then what are you going to say? Sorry, I can't tell you. So why would they agree with you? So I would, I would change that to two members.
What section is that? Yeah, I'm sorry.
I thought you would. Seems to be missing it. Oh, section two, right on page one, special meetings. Special meetings will be called by mayor, majority of the council members. So I think that majority did make sense to me because of the potential Brown Act issue there. So we should make it by two, by at least two of the council members.
Okay.
Okay. That's good. Actually, I like that one. Yeah, that does make sense.
I know. And on the board attendance thing, which is, I think.
I think this one, one thing, you could say, I want to call a special meeting because we need to discuss a letter of recommendation or something like that. And you're just putting it out there. You're not receiving any comment. So there's really no discussion going on, except that people will say, I either want to vote to have a special meeting or I don't want to vote for the special meeting.
I mean, I think that might work, but I think it's almost an irritation to have discussion with two other people and, you know, what was said and wasn't said, maybe they become an issue. So if two people call it, what's the difference? Who ended the discussion?
What is your thing?
Yeah, I think that's true. I think that the tendency will might, could be, why do you want a meeting? And then you're going to start getting into, why does it need to be a special meeting? Why can't it wait till a regular meeting? Then you may get into a situation where that could be a potential violation.
And if we started using it, then I guess you could come back to it. But I think so far, yeah, people are wanting to come to the special meeting. So the mayor's been letting everybody come and say, you got to go here.
Let me just say, I know that this council would never do that. That's right. Let's stay on this council.
Councilmember Turner, you had your hand up for a while. Go ahead.
Yes, I would like to go back to the changing of the time of our documents from Wednesday night to seventy-two hours before. I don't think that that's a small change. I think that's a significant change. And not only that, chances are, if we have it seventy-two hours before the meeting, most, most people will have seventy-two hours before the meeting and not, you know, Wednesday night. So I would like to keep that. I would vigorously oppose any effort to reduce that notice that we give council members and residents on topics that we're going to be discussed at the meeting. We need to give them enough preparation time for them either way to be able to look and say, yes, I've done my research. The other, the other thing I wanted to talk about was the special meeting. So can I talk about that now?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. That this brings me, we have a lot of, we've had a lot of special meetings this past year. And in many cases, we were given twenty-four hours notice. And with that, residents asked me and complained that the meetings are over even before they know that it's happening. Many people believe that the council probably uses this mechanism to push unpopular proposals without public input. So whether that's true or not, I told them, you know, that that's not the case. I don't think so. But it is the perception. Now, I believe special meetings were conceived in the context of emergency meetings, a situation in which the council needed to take immediate action. Certainly, the council needs that flexibility. However, I don't recall any special meetings that were called to deal with emergency situation. So I'd like to suggest one thing. What I'd like to suggest is that we create a special category for emergency meetings. So we have special meetings, and we have we have emergency meetings that where we retain the twenty-four hour deadline to those. But for special meetings, we should have the same notice requirements for regular meetings. This would give people adequate time to respond to issues, do their research, eliminate the criticism that we are manipulating the agenda to stifle public input. So that's my comment on on basically this section. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you. Council. Kirsten. Have you heard about that category before, specific emergency meetings? Is that something we should?
It sounds to me like the merge, as Councilmember Turner described, that an emergency meeting would be the twenty-four hours notice, and that would be something that had to happen, whether it was some decision had to be made on something, maybe there was a short timeframe on a grant or something like that. And the other, the special meeting category would be, we need something done, but we don't have a meeting for two weeks. So it didn't necessarily rise to that level. I haven't seen it before. We could do it. We would just need to come up with categories for them.
Councilmember Turner.
I think that what Councilmember Turner is referring to is part of the closed sessions that we had in the past year. I think the closed sessions are different than special meetings. And what's the requirement for a closed session?
Same, it's the same.
Twenty-four hours.
If it's special, yes, yes. Because they would, they would always be special unless they were included in a regular meeting. So if that makes sense. So you could have a closed session during tonight's meeting, and that would require the seventy-two hours notice because it's part of the regular agenda. If you had it before this meeting, that would be considered a special meeting, so it would be a twenty-four hour notice.
Yeah.
So that would be whether it's closed session or regular.
Right. And I think that's that was the reason why we had the special meetings in twenty twenty-three. Yeah, let me just also say, we did have a couple of special meetings so that we could discuss a particular topic for a longer time, so that we wouldn't have a regular meeting go exceedingly long time. But we did put the agenda item for that special meeting out normally the seventy-two hours before, even even earlier than that. So I would, I would always want to leave the ability to have a special meeting on twenty-four hour notice, because those are important. We've had to use those to actually conduct business, sign a contract, approve payment, or something along that line. I think it's important to keep those. And we always need to keep in mind that we inform the public of why we are having a special meeting and make sure that everybody feels comfortable and does not think that we're trying to circumvent having a full public meeting to accomplish something that may not be popular out in the public. So I, I think, I think we've met that standard and will continue to do so.
I agree. Tool to have, but we should use it sparingly only when necessary.
Yes.
And I agree with you, Turner, you had quite a few last year. Actually, one of the commitments I made as mayor was to have as few special meetings as possible.
And I will also just back up Councilmember Turner, that I have heard those comments too.
Yes.
Why, why aren't you doing this during a regular meeting?
It should be used when there's absolutely no way to wait for the next council meeting. It has to be really urgent, and I I frankly have a hard time coming up with things that cannot wait for two weeks for the next council meeting. So as a mayor, I'll use it sparingly to tool when needed. So let me make some comments on the proposed changes also. I'm strongly in favor of leaving the timing for the agendas as it is right now. I'm not changing it. And I've heard so many comments from residents, both during this term, but also my previous term on the council. Seventy-two hours is not enough. Give it one more time. That seventy-two hours is not enough. Give it one more time, especially since it's around the weekend. Uh, so I'm strongly in favor of keeping it the way it is and, and looking at all the, all the council members, I think, therefore probably, uh, no problem. Um, I have one comment and, or question actually. The agenda shall be available to the public uh, no later than seventy-two hours. So why are we treating the public differently than the council members? It's on the, uh, item seven, agenda. The city clerk shall prepare the agenda item. The number eight, your agenda shall be available to the public in the office of the city clerk and posted no later than seventy-two hours prior to the meeting. Bottom of page two. It doesn't seem to be consistent with.
Well, I, I actually, um, I, when I email that it's posted, it's also, I do the e-blast. So I notify the, so I, I guess I haven't followed the, so we two at this point when we post.
Change this language, um.
So you could change it to say the agenda shall be available to the public in the office of the city clerk and posted um, at the same time, the city council, or the agenda is available to the city council.
Yeah, because it is at this point. You just read little.
Yeah, I know in practice where it all goes out at the same time, but this, yeah, it's a little confusing. The other comment I have.
Oh, there's the seventy-two.
Yeah.
That was, that was in there at four. Yeah.
That's a good question. The other comment I have, uh, I don't know how all the council members feel about this, um. It's about the apartment mayor and then providing the tasks. Um, provided that the council member has the time to fulfill the duties of mayor, including attending ceremonial events. I think that language is a little patronizing. And I would like to just leave that out. I think it's.
Fine.
Yeah.
I'll get that. I, my, my thought of that was to move it to the next section. Um, this is. I'm gonna pick a bit of a mess. I start over. Oh, the apartment, the next one, uh, section is three qualifications. Um, it would say that any member of council is eligible to serve as mayor or vice mayor. And in that it says, in casting the votes for mayor, vice mayor, council members of the council may consider candidate's leadership qualities, his, his ability to conduct council meetings. And, and other things. I would, I would say we, we can move that sentence to this.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Did you get that?
Sorry, we made that. Oh, that it's already covered in.
So you want to move that or you want to take it out?
No, you would take it out, but that's I had one, we would write in three as a qualification. I can, that she has a, and he or she has time to go to ten meetings. I don't know. Are you, are you, are you wore diet?
I don't think the mayor can attend all ceremonial events. Yeah. There are so many. I'm starting to find that out now.
Right.
So many. Last year, there are so much going on. So it has to be a little selective.
Yeah.
So based on availability.
I should remove that qualification. Uh. I have one more comment. I can make that.
Sure. So we're taking it out and we're transferring over to patients. Do you want to put it in number three or it sounded like the mayor wanted to take it out?
Yeah, that's why I was confused because something like the mayor wanted it all and then.
Well, I'm offering to put it in three, so.
Let's combine it with the other section.
It's, it's, it's good.
So we all understand that no mayor is ever going to attend all the ceremonial events that they are invited to.
So you could add attending ceremonial events when possible?
When possible, and appropriate or something like that.
Um.
Councilman Eli, you have one more?
Yeah, I have one more. Just trying to find the place that I have a comment on. I had to do a job. Item eleven, a section that I don't have. But it is, item eleven, that has to do with. I think you need to.
Or a fact.
Say send.
I'm sorry. You said we know, but we don't.
Yeah, the report attendance.
Oh, it's page four. Uh, item eleven, remote participation of a, of a council member.
Yeah, so I, I thought we need to, uh, put some, some language in there that allows remote attendance based on the new state criteria. If you have a medical condition or whatever else, you can appear remotely.
Right.
So they can verify that.
Okay.
So that they get participated in.
Yeah, and there is under that, um, depending on which category you fall under. There, one requires a, a notice. There's a time period for it. The other, there isn't. So if something happens like today, um, then there's no, if, if you can't attend, you can arrange for it the day of. There's no notice because you wouldn't know. If it's an urgency, you wouldn't necessarily know.
Correct. So, so, so this kind of covers that situation. But it doesn't go to the remote participation because of medical thing, where they don't have to notify you of the address and all that. But this one says they have to give your addresses.
Yeah, this is for the old.
So, 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 yeah, so we can bring it up to date, current state law.
All right. Council member Turner, go ahead.
Uh, yes, I would, I will also suggest that we return this to staff to work out the wording. Let me give you some examples here. There are other sections that will need to be made consistent with any changes. For example, section B, addressing the council, item five, inclusion of public correspondence requires that any member of the public wishing to include written correspondence in the agenda packet must submit that correspondence by Wednesday before the meeting. However, under this proposal, members of the public will not even know what is on the agenda until three days later. So there's a catch twenty-two here that needs to be fixed. And I suggest that we give it to staff first before we actually look at it again. Thank you.
I think, uh, I think I heard some questions about your comment.
No, no, that, that, that's, we actually have a question about the language that's in there. So we'll, we'll clean that up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that, that, I, I guess we're talking about if they're going to give some items for presentation, they have to give it to the council two P M. on that day. But if they want something to be included in the packet, it had to be on eleven A M. The minutes they prior to the city council meeting because you want to make sure you get it into your ministry packet.
But then they won't know what is actually, what the agenda is going to look like. So how would they know to include something for that specific item? I think that's what she's saying. It's not making sense.
Okay, so, so there is the next section that says, um, sometimes they just want to send you something.
Oh, like public comments that are?
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Because the next sentence says for inclusion in additional post packet. They have to eleven A M. Monday. So they're not cut off. They're just.
Yeah, as of now, um, I, anything I receive, you know, as soon as I post, I'm adding it.
You need to.
And usually I'm constantly checking even, you know, right before meetings start and I make sure that I forward that to everybody as well as post it um, on the website. But we can clarify that.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, oh. So just a, a quick question. I know with a number of the committees that I participate in, I see a lot of changes to the agenda. What, are there any specific rules? Usually it's because there is some type of public comment or that there's some additional information that has been discovered about an agenda item. And so they'll, they'll say that this is a revised agenda to include additional material. They usually don't take things out. But I'm just wondering, is there firm and fast rules? Once the agenda is published, doubt shall not change.
Um, so if you, it, it depends. Great answer. Um, if it's within that seventy-two hour window, um, if it relates to an item that's on the agenda, then yes, you could do that. You could add it.
If it does need to stay within that seventy-two hour window, it's like, yeah, it's going to come out on, on Wednesday, but on Friday, we, we may make that final, final change.
So I just want to quickly, so when we met, the mayor and I met, I think that was one thing we wanted to keep. So that, you know, based off, um, giving staff opportunities to submit everything and put together, we add, we put post on the Wednesday and unless, um, it was an emergency, like something that we really needed on the agenda, uh, the mayor has requested that, you know, unless it's an emergency, we can post, but other than that, we won't add it. It could be pushed to the next meeting.
Okay.
That's how I was.
I think that, um, in most circumstances, yes, you can, but, um, that tends to create some confusion in the public as well as some additional work for staff. And so, you know.
And, and it is very frequent that I see it, but I will say I've probably seen it a half a dozen times in the past year amongst many committees and, and, and boards and things like that. So.
Yeah, it, it, it's a balancing act. You've got the agenda that should go out, but when it's there, then state law allows seventy-two hours. So if you have something else that needs to be added, you know, after that, as long as you do it for seventy-two hours, you, you can balance it saying, do I want to get into this meeting or get it ready for the meeting two weeks later?
Right.
But if you need to get it, then get it in. I mean, that's.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to say, oh, wow, we need to make a decision on the housing element and we'll just stick that in on Friday afternoon.
I think where you might see it would be if you had, um, a, a planning project coming through. You got something from the applicant that maybe wasn't addressed in the staff report or something like that. And, and maybe staff wanted the council to have the opportunity to look at it rather than hearing it from them at the council meeting. That might be something.
Yep.
Okay. Um, I have two more change, three more changes. Um, page twelve, preparation of minutes. I think this language is just so archaic. The city clerk shall neatly cover it in a book kept for the purpose. Shall we change that to something more contemporary?
More modern.
Which book is that?
I thought it said scroll before, but maybe not. Will and Quillan and, and Partridge. I have a, this is my page twelve.
Under section.
It's a section.
You know, preparation of the minutes.
Yeah, the book.
Teas.
Again. The other comment I have is, uh, section six of that same paragraph six of the same session, council meeting recordings. Uh, it speaks about executive sessions. So now we have executive sessions, closed sessions and special sessions.
That's close. That should be, that means closed session. I don't know why it was called executive.
We should change that also. And my final comment is on seven, item number seven, right below it, public access. It mentioned inspection by citizens and taxpayers. I think we should change that to residents, probably.
It's actually anybody.
We have non-taxpaying.
Anybody can look at them.
Anybody. Not so members of the public or something like that. You see, I wrote it too.
Okay, very good. So is the five, is the five year period required? Would we have to keep it for that long?
So we have a record retention, um, policy. And so it would make it consistent without this one. And I can actually check it.
We, we can check and come back with the right.
Yeah, so whatever.
Whatever, whatever. If you've adopted it already, we'll just make sure it's.
Okay. All right. So, or any other comments?
I have a question. Um, on the selection of mayor, vice mayor. Um, some of you might remember this being an issue. Um, so the.
What, what page are you on?
Sorry, page six. It's B one. Um, and it previously said that the, the reorganization, so the mayor, vice mayor would be selected at the first regular meeting of December. Um, it's added first or second now. In the past, um, it alternated between the first and the second, depending on whether or not it was an election year. And so, um, it, it said that in an election year, it's the second. In a non-election year, it's the first. We don't specify that here. So my question is, how do we know which one it is and who decides?
I. I, oh, sorry.
I have no preference. Um, as far as I'm concerned, we could just fix it on the, on the second only. The second meeting of December.
So you would not have a second meeting.
Exactly.
True.
That's, yeah. That, that's why I thought, you know, keep it the first or the second. And you just, you just roll with whatever makes sense that you, that year. If you don't have a second session, then by definition, you know, you, you don't do it. I like, I like the flexibility of that.
But who decides? Who, who decides?
And, and the issue in the past was, who does it? So if you do it at the first meeting in December, and let's say it's in an election year, you do it at the first meeting, then you could have new people selecting the mayor. Um, if you do it in the, sorry, the opposite, you could have old people doing, selecting the mayor. But if you do it the second meeting, you would have new people. Some people care. Some, in the past, that was an issue. Um, so just to clear as kind. And so if we want to be to avoid potential issue.
Well, there is a differentiation, right? On non-election years, we got this first or second. For election years, it's, uh, uh, when this, when the results are certified. So, so the distinction is, is there, I believe. I, I, I think leaving it first, just make it on non-election year, just make it on the first meeting like that. Where I think I just worry about.
So delete the or second?
Yeah, I would say just delete it. It's just create a review. I'll just leave it like that.
Yeah. As long as we, we assured up the new mayor and vice mayor are, are elected, selected by the new council.
Well, they're selected at that time. So that's, that's what is going to happen, right?
Yes, we have issues in the past where you, you old, old council, if you will.
Well, there, there is, this is non-election year.
Right.
There is no change. It, it's still going to be the old council.
Yeah. Yeah.
So non-election year, you're doing it on the first meeting. On election year, you're doing it on, it's already set up like that. If this was changed to so that the new council would get to more of an election year. So it's already, um, there was one of Sean Doots' big contribution to our.
Yeah.
Uh, so, so for election year, it's covered. The, the new council that does it and non-election year, it's going to suck again.
All right. And you have other comments, suggestions?
Uh, well, first of all, um, I want to say that I'm delighted that everyone went through it and read this. And in a way, I'm kind of ashamed that last year we didn't follow the, the timing because this whole section was kind of unbeknownst to me and others. So, so this, now all of a sudden we're focused on it. So I think that's very much a positive thing. And, um, yeah, I, I, yeah. So then the second part of this is we're providing direction to the, uh, city clerk and the city attorney to staff. And then they're going to come back at the next meeting or something. I think, I, I so it's direct. So we don't need to make a motion.
Right, right. And one, one more question and then I'll summarize it to make sure that we're all on the same page. Um, on nine, sorry, it is A nine, which is page.
Order of business?
Yes.
Page three.
So it looks like, um, the proposal is to remove the reference to regular meeting. Typically, you won't, you don't have all of this stuff at a special meeting. You only have whatever the topic is of the special meeting. But if we remove that regular, then this would be what you would have at all meetings. So I'm not sure what the thought was on removing the word regular.
So if you look at, at three then?
No.
Just, no, no, I, I, I get it. I'm, I'm saying, look at A three on the first page.
Okay.
All regular and special meetings. So then it's defined as council meetings. So why, why don't you just move the definition council meetings to after regular? And then it's not, and then special meetings are defined, define a special meeting separately.
Okay.
Then, then it.
Yeah. Council member, any other further comments? I think so, um.
If you get a red line or green line, the next change you make, the, the red line was really very helpful.
So I think our city attorney was going to give a summary of changes.
Right. Yes. Okay. So. So. No one had a comment on um waiver given by telegram? You guys okay getting rid of that? Um so the first.
Wait, wait, how did somebody send the telegraph to us?
I don't know, I'm not sure. One eight hundred Western. Western Union.
Welcome back, fax and the governor's email.
Does that mean you have to learn Morse code?
So in section A three, I'll clarify that defined term will just be for regular meetings and I'll make sure that's consistent throughout. The agenda language, we're gonna go, we're gonna remove any reference to the seventy-two hours and it will be um the Wednesday, the old language, the Wednesday. Yeah, and make the availability to the public consistent as well. The. Remote participation, we're gonna include um the new state law requirements in that as well, that would be under A eleven. Manner of addressing. The council. We're gonna keep that, we're gonna make those changes. Mayor, vice mayor, we're going to remove the reference to the second regular meeting, it'll just be at the first meeting in December. We're gonna move, remove the language about the time to fulfill the duties, we're gonna put that in section three below. The decorum section, um we're gonna have that apply to both in-person and virtual meetings, that's on page nine. Minutes, we're gonna change that, make it um a little more modern and make sure that it's available to members of the public.
We'll make sure that the continuing recordings are consistent with our.
Council meeting recordings, consistent with our retention policy and we'll remove the reference to executive sessions. And then we will also um make sure we address any internal inconsistencies or changes.
Are you gonna remove the reference again, or are you just gonna call it closed sessions?
We're going to, we don't keep minutes at um closed sessions typically, so I I would just recommend removing it.
And you're also going to look into how other jurisdictions handle it, sign.
Yeah, let me just look here and make sure.
Postage size signs would be okay. Postage. Or postcards or maybe.
Oh, and calling of the um special meetings is the mayor or two council, two two council members.
And one more, sorry. My page twelve, delivery of minutes. I I think the language needs to be changed. So it says, no later than three weeks after each council meeting, uh shall be forwarded to the city council members. Usually put the minutes in the agenda for the next meeting. The three weeks, for example, well, well, not we met during the summer, during a summer break over Christmas, things like that, so. We should probably change that, that the minutes shall be published with the agenda of the next meeting, the next council meeting. Or something like that.
Well, I think it it would, I think the way it's stated there is, I think that if somebody, for whatever reason, didn't have, you know, we have, I don't know. I wasn't able to fulfill the minutes of this meeting for the next, for the February's, but I still would have to present it at least by the second meeting of February. I think that's what it's saying, no later than.
Yeah, there is, there are some times where other things take priority and the minutes don't get done, that's not not common, it's not something that I think that the city clerk likes to do, but it could happen. So what this is saying is as soon as possible, but no later than.
Yeah.
So it would be, it should be two weeks, but it could go three weeks.
Okay.
The the June meeting isn't gonna be, we're not gonna see those minutes until the first meeting in August, if we have no July.
So so there's a difference between, and we may not do this, so maybe we should change this, is there's a difference between providing the minutes to the council members and putting it on the agenda. So if this is worded, um she should be sending the minutes to you regardless of whether or not it's on the agenda. We may not do that in practice, we may not want, she may not want to. But that's how this, this, I think, is assuming it it's in addition to it being on the agenda for approval, she's to send them out to all of you um after.
Okay.
Which is, which is, I guess, somewhat superfluous, and if you're sending it with the agenda, you're gonna get the mayor to sign off at some point. But if you say it goes with the agenda, then it gives us time to look at it.
Well, the, yeah, the reason I brought this up is for, I I don't wanna uh for our for for the wish to come in in July to send out the minutes for the for the journey. Yeah. This could lead to to say that you have to do it.
So instead, you could say the next, the next meeting or the two meetings um later, no later than the second meeting following. Some, we can come up with somewhere.
Okay.
Okay.
Scheduled, right? They they schedule their calendar near to the following year.
Yeah, as as long as you keep getting them out, it's fine. I know last year or the year before, we had issues. Getting the minutes, it took a while to get them. But that was before you, so what are your thoughts?
It would, just as we're going through this discussion, it's a lot easier if you have A one, A two, A three, B one, B two, B three. In the ordering of these, just. Pardon? No, just put it, put it in the in the heading. So then you could say, if if the mayor said, I want to look at item nine, then you have to look. Well, that's on page three, item, which item nine is, yeah, just to make it.
No, I do like that idea, though, because item nine, section B, you gotta go find section B first and.
Or number and consecutive. Anyway. No, it's just a suggestion. Okay, I think we've uh wrapped up this item. I have a question for council member and legislature, are you planning to go through other rules and regulations documents?
You know, it's.
I'm not saying you have to. All right.
I I would just suggest considering from city manager having comments.
All right, shall we move on to the next uh subject, which is discuss selection of meeting dates for strategic goal sessions, goal setting. We have this uh every year, last year was on April first, and I think uh city manager has a report on that.
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. Good evening for you is a opportunity to perhaps choose a set date every year and a set process every year uh for our annual strategic goals meeting. Usually, since I have been here, it has been in the spring, but it hasn't been on the same uh date of the year. Um on one occasion, we had on Saturday, April first last year. One occasion, we had it on a council meeting night. Um we had them in March, we had them in April, we even had it as late as May or June since I've been here. And it would be helpful for monoserena staff, probably as well as yourselves, when we look at the annual calendar to just pick a date such as maybe the second meeting of April as an example, or the first meeting in April, so we can have it be consistent every year. And um you know, of course, the ultimate goal is to have the meeting completed before um we adopt our annual budget uh by June thirtieth, or in most cases um by the second meeting in June. Um but we like to have the goals figured out um before that, in the sense, because we want to be able to establish funding and then bring those funding numbers to achieve those goals to the council in our pre-budget meetings, which happen in uh the month of May. We usually have two pre-budget meetings and then a budget meeting uh in either uh the month of May or May slash mid Ju-, uh early June, and then we, by mid-June, we adopt the budget. So um staff is just looking for our, for discussion guidance from council, direction from council on this, so we can have some consistency. And we're available for your questions. Thank you.
Council members, any questions about this?
So what do you do here recommending?
Well, last year, we had it in April, and that seemed to work well, although it was on a Saturday, it was April first. I think it's not necessarily uh necessary to have it on a Saturday, we can schedule it during a regular council meeting night. We've done that in the past as well, that seemed to work out okay. So. I would say either the, probably by the second week of April would be good. And probably on a regular council meeting night where we can schedule a light agenda and or start a little bit early and have dinner and um have a lighter agenda for the regular scheduled meeting. Something like that would be. Would be possible, possible idea.
Before uh before we get into questions and discussions, uh try to keep it low. Questions?
Okay.
No, yeah.
So question, and this one's probably more for Kirsten than anybody else, is uh is it possible that we could start working on a document, a shared document, where people could contribute ideas to it? Or would this be something that, well, but I mean, can we send it all to a staff member? And have that staff member accumulate all of our, so we wouldn't be able to read everybody's input, but we would be able to submit it. And then that document could be built, and then we could then have something to work on, and we wouldn't. And we could possibly make the the meeting or this particular item run a little bit smoother.
I think councils, yes, yes, it's possible and legal. Um any other questions?
Mister Leonardi's, um what's the earliest that you think that it would be achievable to to build this to to have our our meeting on the goals for the for the upcoming year?
It can be held anytime of the year, it could be, you know, the first, or or, you know, of course, the first week in January, we're considering not having a meeting annually, but it could be at this very meeting we have tonight, the second, you know, meeting or this, what would ordinarily be the second meeting of January. It could be done, but it seems to work well in the springtime because, you know, when we have the new council get seated, we adopt uh the, we we have the uh ad hoc committees and the commission appointments. You know, those tend to gain a little bit of traction if you have a little bit of time, and then perhaps some ideas can be generated there. Um but the springtime works nicely in the sense where as long as we get it done prior to the uh pre-budget meetings, gives us time also to look at the mid-year budget numbers and the spring. And you know, the mid-year is kind of a misnomer because the mid-year comes out like right before we budget for the next year. We start having staff, we have a staff meeting, we all plan what um what the departments are going to need going forward. And we suggest those items to the council, and almost immediately, within a month, we're already having the pre-budget meetings based on that information as well as the strategic goals meetings. So to make a long story short, in my experience being here, I think you know, the second meeting of April is a good time, but it can be anytime if council desires, it could be earlier in the year. There really is no uh advantage or disadvantage, honestly, to that timeframe.
Or follow-on question, um. In terms of that meeting, um could we? It would be good to, to ha, I think it would be good to have it outside of a normal council meeting. And the reason is, when I look at what other cities are doing, they don't have it in their, in their meeting. So it can be more of a, um what's what's the correct term, uh where you only have an information, only make a study session? Study session, that's what it is. So so I I think that if you say, and what I, what I thought worked well here over a number of years that I observed it, is that if it's not part of a regular council meeting, you don't have that pressure. But let me circle back to to my question. My question is, when is the lightest time of the year? Which council meetings? Because we talked last year about which ones we could eliminate, which was a mistake last year, I think. But, you know, February, March, how heavy is, are the meetings in March? And is, and maybe the city clerk knows that.
Actually, I'm gonna hand an email to you guys of what the coming month are gonna look like in regards to our agendas, and I think the next month or so look a little light. Uh not to say that, you know, um I like to send out a family check-in with the staff to see if there's anything additional coming onto the agenda, and they usually will let me at least know, you know, within that month if anything's gonna go on there. But yes.
Yeah, yeah, we could make uh first meeting. So that that all comes back to the question.
So back in twenty twenty-two, there was one on the, what looks like on a Tuesday. Yeah, twenty second of March.
Talking and we're going into a discussion now, so let's open this up for public comment first before we make any decisions. So anybody online who wants to contribute to this?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. Okay, you know, let's go into a discussion. I think in my, from my point of view, the question is, do we do it on a Saturday or do we do it during a council meeting on a Tuesday?
I I would suggest let's go with April sixteenth, or for some reason, I had something on my calendar saying there's something very long to see conference.
Okay, so that's one, one vote for during a council meeting.
Yeah, it's during April sixteenth, I think April date, both the second Tuesday. So make that a a standing meeting, though, just make it a regular meeting and then have a light calendar on April meeting.
So the second meeting in April.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, right, one time. Oh. Operationally, I think that the first or second meeting in March would be better. And, you know, that gives staff time to to do things and also uh it gives lots of runway. I'm very sensitive with April. And maybe it's my tax return. And I I would prefer April's is a difficult month. So.
I agree with that. Um, okay, so let let, but let's. During a a council meeting or on a Saturday?
I would prefer to do it on, not on a city council day, but if we have a light agenda that or a dedicated agenda to that. I also think it's very good to have people from the public attend that meeting and and getting their input. And.
Right. Council member Turner. You're you're muted.
Thank you. I wanted to ask the mayor, I mean, the the city manager. Um in in the past, you've used um yourself as the person who was uh essentially running the meeting, and you've also used a um somebody else. I think his name was uh Sean. And you've also used a, somebody else, I think his name was Sean Spano. What are your thoughts on, on doing that again?
Before we, sorry, before we go through that, can we make a decision first on whether it's on a, during a council meeting or on a Saturday? What are your, your thoughts?
Council meeting.
Council meeting. Councilmember Turner, council meeting or Saturdays?
Council meeting.
Okay, council meeting for me too, so that's. It will happen during a council meeting, a dedicated, probably a dedicated council meeting. So, Councilmember Turner, your question was about potentially bringing in a facilitator or have our?
Yeah, we, we had a facilitator in previous years, and then we also had, we also didn't have a facilitator. And in my opinion, I think having a facilitator in there works, works best. Because he can keep the, the, the meeting going and on track. So that is my preference, and I wanted to get the city manager's input on this. And what his plans are for this coming year.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner, I haven't thought that far ahead in the future. We, as you mentioned, did have Mr. Spano at least four years in a row, I know the first three years I did the strategic goals, we engaged his services. This last April first, almost a year ago, we did not engage his services for that meeting, it was a Saturday meeting. That was the first time it was a weekend meeting in a while, I can check and see if Mr. Spano is available for the meeting. It is a cost to the city of approximately four thousand dollars. So last year, it did seem like we were able to get through the meeting fine without the services of Mr. Spano, but. We can check into that if the council desires.
And I asked, just, I think in the last study session, or not study session, but team building that we had. We had the other gentleman, is it Kevin?
Mr. Dugan.
Dugan, yes.
And he mentioned a follow-up meeting, and I, I would possibly consider his services if he's available. Of course, we have to pick a date first.
Okay. That's got feedback from the other council members, facilitator or city manager running the meeting?
I, I wanna, sorry for dragging this back, but I think the city manager's recommendation to have it on the same time every year is, I think that's a really. Great idea, and I, I would support that, and I would say that, as I think it more through, the first meeting in March would be a lighter one. To answer your question directly on facilitator or not, I think, having the, let me say it differently. I think we should invite Mr. Dugan back for that session.
What, what is the charges for Mr. Dugan on that call?
It was also about four thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I think last, last meeting, the, the city manager ran, I think ran pretty well. I think we should save the four thousand dollars, I don't know what specific contribution, and after Mr. Dugan's meetings. I mean, various city council, I mean, he did a great job, but I'm just trying to figure out. It translates into concrete improvements or all the line it should. But I, you know, make, make it as easy as possible, pick a day, the time that looks for all the possibilities. And that's right, I think we could probably get through with it. You know, we're now only experiencing council members, you're not for a while.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner.
So I will agree with Councilmember Alahi, I, I think that we do not need the services of Kevin again. I thought that he did a great job, but he, he was working in a much wider capacity in terms of it being team building. Along with strategic goals and, and, you know, it gave us, he, he would kind of steer us off track a little bit and then bring us around, and. So I don't think we need to do that if we're talking about goals. And since we're talking about goals, just a suggestion, and I'm just throwing this out. Is that we have a very small staff here, they've got a lot of projects on their plate already. And so maybe take a look at establishing some ground rules as to what a goal is. And maybe say, okay, every council member can have two goals, you can trade them, you can combine them with somebody else, you can try to merge them together. But if all of us had two goals, that's ten projects for the city with a staff of six people. So I don't know how many goals we're really going to come up with. And also, what is a goal? Is it fix a stop sign, fix a dangerous curve, cut a tree down, is that a goal? Yeah, I mean, those would be really big accomplishments. I think if one of us were able to get these kind of things done, the work we did on the curve that they did, I think that that was the goal. It was set, and it was met, and it benefited the whole city. But if we're gonna have goals of, you know, let's paint the building, or let's take a look at processes and things like that. I mean, that's stuff that staff is going to be doing regularly, so. I don't wanna say gamify it, but, you know, maybe try to say, okay, keep your goals to this type of, of level.
Yeah, I, I completely agree with you on that. So it looks like sparse facilitator or not, it's two against two right now, so I'll have the deciding vote. We'll have the city manager run the meeting. Unless there are any strong objections, but I want to discuss it any further.
Oh, on, on that, my, I think that that's a decision for this year, but I think it's situational specific.
Yeah.
I remember this, this year, I, yeah.
You know, it's just like, we don't need to all go to new council training every year, but when there's a big change in the, in the entire council, it is nice to all.
Yep.
Attend it and, and have a team bonding experience.
Okay. Someone needs to decide on the dates.
I was just gonna say, would you guys wanna stick to it being on a regular city council meeting then?
Yes.
Okay.
I think, I think your suggestion of having a fixed dates, sort of casting stone every year, the first week of March would work for me. First, or stop, is that too early for?
It could be done comfortably, we have enough, we have over a month, so.
Most of the preparation for the meeting, I think, will be done by council members, making up all these new wonderful goals.
As long as the council has enough time, staff will get it done.
Could you send us the last three little things that we set up as a reminder, show what that was?
You said March, right, the first meeting, so just.
That's March.
Then we don't have a conflict if there's Easter in March, and, you know, I think March was pretty light.
Yeah. It looked light last week, I took that year, two weeks ago, I took that the agenda, or fifth.
So March fifth, that's, now we have a presentation, the presentation for the Santa Clara County Fire, presenting on the first meeting of March. And then we have also the mid-year budget report as well, scheduled on there.
How's March nineteenth?
I wanna say that for the March nineteenth, actually we have, at least, I think, given their hesitation. So police will be presenting on the second meeting in March, and that's it. I don't have anything else.
Could probably move down here. That would be a good, probably a good opportunity. And what the vice mayor mentioned earlier, if council wishes to submit ideas now, we can start compiling those ideas. They'll discuss among yourselves. But.
Okay.
And you can send us the last years, and we can, they're on resubside.
Okay, we can resend that to you, I will.
We can send some other past year ones too, so you can add some of those.
Good.
So is that date gonna work?
So you guys want March nineteenth, so as of now, you guys are wanting me to check in, so we can just reschedule the police service report for a different date?
Yeah.
Or that report lasts twenty minutes.
It'd be easier to keep it up.
Okay, let's focus on.
We'll, we'll work on that.
Sometimes we have so many questions, but I think tomorrow is, we can get them out of it.
So by when should council members submit their calls, protocols to staff?
Do, do we want to discuss at all limiting the number of goals council members can submit? Did anybody like that idea at all?
Yes, I did.
I mean, it's a good idea to refine them at some point, but sometimes you just wanna tour them on and see what sticks. Because it's possible, we may be submitting the same roles, and then city manager can, you know, eliminate the ones that are gone. Or, or before they come, or if they come to us in the formal meeting, we can then say, okay, let's go and prioritize these. You may better have them, and then you get prioritized top ten, pick the top ten out of those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we should say council members should use discretion when submitting calls.
Well, yeah, of course. All right.
Oh, what, what?
Back on, should we?
March first, so that'd be okay? Steve, are you okay when we're starting to receive this, or by March first? So that we can work on making sure everything is ready.
Meeting will be on March nineteenth, and council gets all their information by March first, so we can prepare the meeting.
Right. So good. All set for that one?
Okay.
We are moving on to committee and commissioner reports. Councilmember Gray.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Elaine. Nothing. Councilmember Turner?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to make a comment. Over the holiday, over the holidays, um, I did a post for Cert along with Evert. And within two days, I got notice from Nextdoor that the number of residents that actually looked at it. Was in the neighborhood of one thousand seven hundred. Two days later, it went up to twenty-five hundred.
Councilmember, hold on, hold on please. We are on community and commissioner reports. Do you have any report on the West Valley sanitation district?
No, no, I, 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 usually we combine comments, so do you want me to hold off on that?
I'm just following the agenda.
Do you want me to hold off?
Councilmember McShipp, you have anything to report?
Uh, yes, the BTA PAC meeting was, was canceled, and there's. Silicon Valley Clean Energy has had a couple of meetings. And they. There's, there's a new chair and vice chair for the Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And I have nothing else for.
I've had no meetings so far, the only thing that is probably of interest related to water. Is the proposed price hikes that I asked our city to distribute. San Jose Water has announced further price hikes. That's related to the San Pedro Valley Water District. Other than that, I have no meetings so far. Councilmember comment, Councilmember Turner, you were first, go ahead.
Can I go now?
Yeah.
I can, I can barely hear you. Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, okay, um, where was I? Um, I was talking about the post on Nextdoor about Cert. And the first two days, we got one thousand seven hundred residents. And then in the next couple of days later, we got two thousand five hundred residents. I spoke to a couple of, I haven't finished the list, but I've, I've spoken to a couple of, of Montesereno residents. And I wanted to bring up some of their concerns about using Nextdoor to work with programs like Cert. Both of them in, on separate conversations, basically said that the, they believe that for Montesereno. The number of scammers on Nextdoor is pretty high. One of them said that they believe that in one year alone, in the year twenty twenty-two, there have been two hundred. Residents that have, have said that they moved to Montesereno, the next year it was three hundred. And in January alone, we've had twenty. So they're a little hesitant to put their names out there, because they don't know whether they will be exposed to these scammers who are fake residents. So I wanted to bring that up, just so that, you know, maybe the city clerk or, or the city manager can take a look at it. And validate some of our surveys, so that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member comments?
I, I don't know if you saw that email from, from on the two. Let's listen to that pass on ADUs, which allows them to be sold as condominiums, basically. And I think that the board resolution should probably center out your.
So it only applies if the council adopts an ordinance allowing it to occur, it doesn't happen automatically, which is sort of surprising, because the state has. Made it most howling law mandatory, but we do have some control over that.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate if you could send us a memorandum on that.
Okay.
So we, we understand it regardless of those. And I kind of glanced through that, and I think recognized that that was going on, but that's a pretty important piece of legislation. And maybe the council needs to consider that, whether we want to allow it or not. It basically says that ADU can be sold as a condominium. Which might be an incentive for people to build ADU, or it might be a disincentive, so, so it may be something we need to consider, so. Our request that we look at that and have a discussion.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Councilmember McShipp, comments?
No.
Okay, let me move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, I have two items. One is a kind of a good, new feel-good item, our youth commission, their holiday coats and cans. Drive produced twenty-nine articles of clothing, ninety food items, twenty-nine dental packs, including toothpaste floss and brushes and et cetera. So staff gathered those items and brought them down to West Valley Community Services and delivered those. So they can go to people in need, so we wanna say thank you to our Montesereno Youth Commission for that. During the holidays, I, I learned of one of our long-term residents, Philippa Als, she passed away. And Philippa was very involved in the community. She actually, during my tenure here, she served briefly on the Better Streets Commission. So I just wanted to mention that, just in case council was not aware of that. If you wanted to consider maybe adjourning a future meeting, earning that would be up to the mayor's discretion, I guess. And that's it?
Thank you. Anybody have any future agenda items to propose?
I will say that. The issue on Highway nine, I cycle that four times a week, and I've seen the truck that was out there. And if we need to deal with that, we should do so from a sign perspective. And I think the, the police said they can't do any enforcement, so I think that that's something that. We should have as a future agenda item, perhaps, where we say, we'd like your, a report on that, and then the other is. There is a resident that complained to me about excessive speeds, and I believe that we may not have our. Enforcement requirements, because they have to follow a certain, you have to do some studies or something. So I just think we should maybe have the chief of police give us some, some observations on those two items.
All right. Do we know it? Question for council?
Question for councilmember McChuck. So you're referring to the food truck on Highway nine? Is that? Okay, we have received some inquiries about that in the past. Um, we do have some um information that we can bring at a future meeting about that. Or we can talk privately and then decide how to go forward. And when you mentioned speeds, complaints about speeds, was there any particular areas in the community or streets?
I believe it's Ridge Crest.
Ridge Crest, okay.
Okay, any other?
In that case, I I guess the community center is coming along, you guys have meetings. So that'd be appropriate for them to give us a report after their meetings as to what progresses of the community center.
So would you like that as a future?
Does that, does that ever can they just give the report?
Well, they could give the report um as part of the committee commission reports, but I do think they will be coming back. There's a meeting tomorrow and I think there's some action that may be taken tomorrow that will be coming back to you um for council direction, I believe.
Okay, so somewhere will be on the agenda for directions. Yeah, I would I would request if possible, if it's not on a formal agenda item, just give us a report.
Is we put it on the agenda for the next council meeting?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, but you don't want to have it on every agenda item, but it'd be helpful for a council just to get a report like any of the community report.
Okay. Is that it? Then. The meeting of the Montessorino City Council on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four is scheduled to adjourn at eight fifty-three P M.